Hi, my name is Victoria and the following report features St. James Town residents council hosts summer town hall meeting. A St. James Town Community Town Hall meeting was held on Tuesday, July 11th at 200 Walty Street, East Community Centre to speak about the pressing issues that are deeply affecting residents in the St. James Town neighbourhood and downtown east communities such as housing and affordability, safety, hate crimes against the LGBTQ2+ community, and the drug poisoning emergency in the downtown east. The meeting was coordinated by the St. James Town Residents Council constituted by a diverse team of community members that came together to support the residents of St. James Town by providing information workshops, community building activities, networking, advocacy, town halls, special events, and accessing social services. The town hall meeting had MPP Kristen Wong-Tam and City Councillor Chris Mois as guest speakers. The discussion was moderated by St. James Town community members, Dr Deepika Pabnija, Jennifer Creed, and T. Williams. In addition to exploring community feedback and opportunities, Kristen Wong-Tam provided an update on her work at Queen's Park on behalf of the residents of Toronto Centre and shared her thoughts about the importance of a new Toronto mayor being able to talk about the needs of St. James Town community.
Why was it important for us to have a new mayor? I'm just gonna say it. We needed a mayor who's gonna champion the downtown. We needed a mayor that's going to be able to talk about the needs of St. James Town and be able to talk about it from a lived experience because she grew up here. There's no way that Olivia Chow is not gonna be prioritizing St. James Town. But she can't do that work herself. She needs a councillor and council members that are gonna support her. She also needs the provincial government who's gonna need to step up to address the growing concerns that we have here. And the number of concerns that I've heard in our neighbourhood range from housing being the number one issue for our community, the cost of housing, the quality of housing, whether or not people are stuck or they have a pathway to a larger unit or perhaps they have grown a little bit older and they're now living with a disability. Now they need an accessible unit. They're dealing with, and you are dealing with, and we are dealing with here, perhaps some bad landlords, people who are taking advantage of our community because our community is predominantly immigrants and newcomers and English may not be their first language. So all of that talks about how do we build power to actually empower the residents in our neighbourhood. Other things that I know that are very critical and to the heart of the community is around the cost of affordability. Who has money left over at the end of the month? You don't even have to raise your hand, but just answer the question. End of the week. Who has money at the end of the week? Who doesn't have to look at the price of groceries when they walk in, right? We're all struggling. And I would say everybody that I've spoken to is really trying to make ends meet. And if you have special needs in your life as a child or an elderly parent that you're providing care for, everybody's struggling. And we know that our neighbours in this area are also going hungry because of the cost of grocery. $10 for a stick of butter, $5 for a loaf of bread, bread. Of course, there's nothing, heck of a lot left over. So between those two major issues, housing and the cost of living, everyone is in a place where they need to do a lot more with what they have. And then how can the provincial government help? So the provincial government absolutely has a role to play. I will be a very persistent and consistent champion for you in this neighbourhood. My job is to walk into Queen's Park every day that the house is sitting and to talk about my community of St. James Town. And if anyone has had the chance to watch a few of my speeches, you'll know that I talk about this neighbourhood. I specifically named St. James Town because it's important for me to bring your stories, your lived experience, your struggle, right into the house. So when I have asked the questions to the premier or the Minister of Housing, what are you gonna do about rent control and why can't we have real rent control in Ontario? I specifically bring up stories that I've heard in St. James Town. I bring up stories about people who are facing rent addictions. I talk about bad landlords and bedbugs. I talk about the elevators that are broken and when are we gonna get those minimum standards met? I bring up those issues. I also bring up the issues of community safety because we have our neighbourhood officers here. Is that community safety is also a very significant piece of something that we need to do, but is it about bringing more cops in every single step of the way? We know that they have a role to play, but what brings us safety is when people have access to housing, they have access to opportunities including employment, and they have a community and a family that will support them. That is ultimately gonna be the foundational pieces that will bring us real, deep community safety. So I'm gonna bring my talk, I think, to a little bit of a pause because I want to say that the more I leave space for you, the more you can ask me questions. And I know that the resident council has some questions already prepared. And of course, I'm also happy to answer your specific questions if I can.
I too just want to echo what Kristen mentioned in that I'm looking forward to working with our new mayor elect Olivia Chow. You know, we share the same values and, you know, I get around housing and transit and so many other important issues in the city faces today. So I too look forward to working with her. As mentioned, tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. we're gonna have a smudging ceremony. At 11:00 p.m. we're all gonna gather in council chambers and welcome her to work in. So I look forward to participating. And also, as Kristen mentioned too, like I really enjoy working with my local MPP, you know, my MP and of course my school board trustee. We are a great team working together. And together we serve you the best that we can and we'll do that to the best of our ability. But I did wanna mention two specific things that I think is relevant here today in that one of the things my office has started doing is something called participatory budgeting. In that we have divided the wards into six zones. We've actually just closed it for this year in Corktown, a few other areas. I can't think of it right now. But in that we actually asked the public, you, the community, what would you like to see? For example, be it a park, a dog park, for example, or a laneway being paved, something like that. So we wanna bring that to St. James Town next year. And so we've allocated $750,000 in total for the area. So it could be one project, it could be multiple projects. But, you know, we had 63 proposals this year, which is really great. And I look forward to bringing that here as well. We've also created a website called torontoprojects.ca. So any community member or organisation can actually go to the website and actually bring their own proposals forth outside of the participatory budget. I don't know why I can't say that word. Participatory budget. And you could actually amplify any issue in the community that you feel that needs addressing as well. So again, rather than making the decision in my office, I want to actually get the input from you and go from that route. But again, I do have to leave, but have a wonderful meeting and thank you for having me speak for a few minutes.
Queer people and trans people is happening in Ontario. Conservative protesters are shutting down drag shows and there's a rise in hate. Just a few days ago, a gender studies course in the University of Waterloo was attacked by vigilante with a knife. So it's clear that there's a present threat in this province to our queer population. What is the NDP doing to support queer communities that are under attack?
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's actually a really important question around hate crimes right now. So it's not just the queer community and the trans community that's under attack. We have noted that the rate of hate crimes that are anti2SLGBTQ in Ontario has gone up 107% over 12 months. But did you know that the rise of Islamophobia and antisemitism is also 64 and 67%, respectively? So communities are definitely under attack and we're all under attack by very similar forces. And these forces are oftentimes connected to ultra-right wing white supremacist types of organisations. And even if you have, you know, people who are racialised, who are denouncing, you know, gay people and trans people, the fuel of hate is coming from the same source. And I really wanna stress that because it's very important for us to build coalitions amongst people is that when we see Muslims and Jews under attack and gays and lesbians under attack, we're all under the attack under the same structure. So the same structure of oppression is coming down on us. What is the NDP doing about this? So I've tabled a bill as a 2SLGPT critic specifically to address anti2SLGPT hate, which calls for a hate strategy in Ontario to deal specifically with this community and to support those who are on the subject, who are being subjected to violent protests. So it's not about you protesting. You can protest anything you want. I just want you to do it from 100 metres away from the door. Right? So you can still protest, but can you please walk across the street to do it? Because you shouldn't be in someone's face stopping them from entering an establishment. And let us recognise that, you know, if there are young folks who are attending these events, they're probably going with their parents or guardians, right? My four-year-old is not walking to a show by himself. There's no way. He's too young. But if I wanted to take him, then that would be my choice as a parent. And if I didn't want to take him, that's also my choice. But the bottom line is, this is the bottom line, is that human rights in Ontario are under attack and religious groups, minorities, especially Muslims, Jews, and the 2SLGPT community, these three groups are receiving the top end of hatred in Ontario. So my counterpart, my opponents, are not those who, you know, are from those communities. My opponents are those who are deeply invested in homophobic and racist violence, and that's what I wanna fight, right? And this affects our community. Like I look out the window and I know that, you know, just down the street from us is Canada's largest lesbian and gay village. Just in this pocket here is probably one of the largest, you know, Muslim populations along with Moss Park and Regent Park. These are our community members. These are my neighbours. Any way I turn, these are my neighbours. So I wanna make sure that our neighbours are protected and I'm doing the best that I can. If there's things that you think that we can do better, you know, feel free to give us suggestions because certainly this is a big issue and it is one that I think is going to get more violent. It's one that's getting worse in every way that we turn. So we wanna be able to fight this one together.
About that bill you've tabled, how likely do you think it is to go to law?
So private members though, which is what, so when you're an opposition member, you can table a private members' bill. If you are a minister, meaning that you're in cabinet in government, then you can table a government bill. Government bills are very likely to pass. Private members' bill initiated by members of the opposition or independent parties are less likely to pass. But that doesn't mean that the government can't do the right thing right now because the Solicitor General has purview over public and community safety in Ontario. That's his job. The police have a job. The police have a job of community and public safety. That's their job. So we need all of us working with Solicitor General as well as our Toronto, all the OPP and our CMP to deal with what I am describing as direct attacks through hate crimes. And officer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, when those protests arise and communities are under attack and it's specifically anti-queer and anti-trans, you treat it as a hate crime. Yeah, so it's not a bullying issue. It may come as a form of bullying or harassment, but we have to treat it as a hate crime, which is why we have to fight Islamophobia. We fight antisemitism. We fight the anti-gay violence that's taking place right now. And I really believe, and I will finish this, I believe that Ontarians are fair-minded. I believe that Canadians are good people. I believe right now that what we hear and what we're seeing does not represent the very best of our country or the very best of Ontario. And so the rest of us have got to get louder and louder because it's only growing if we're quiet.
It's always the same small group of people who live by hate, you know?
That's right.
That's all the essence, you know?
Yep.
And they're just looking over at this. It doesn't matter who are there.
Alright, let's move on to our last structured question.
This is our last structured question. I think it's an important one. So, and this is about healthcare privatisation. So Bill 60, Your Health Act, was passed in May. This bill allows private clinics to provide more surgeries and procedures funded through OGG. Critics of the bill, like the Ontario Health Coalition, say that it puts public money in private hands and does nothing to address the chronic underfunding of Ontario's healthcare system. So as the official opposition, what can the NDP do to help defend public healthcare? Thanks for that question. So our party, actually, one of the founding members of the motoring NDP, federally and provincially in Saskatchewan, you know, we're the champions of public healthcare. So our party is deeply embedded into workings of good farmers. That's the root of our party, working with workers and defending universal publicly accessible healthcare. So Bill 60 is a challenge for every one of us because, I don't know about you, but my credit card is pretty maxed out. And if I needed to have some basic type of surgery that should be covered through the healthcare, the public hospitals, and if the waitlist is very long, it's forcing some of us to make decisions where you think you have to go and pay for private service. And the private service will then be paid for by the government, but delivered in a private clinic. In theory, it sounds pretty good, like it's a form of innovation, right? Except for the public healthcare system is already grossly underfunded. The provincial government, the four Conservatives, are sitting on $22 billion of unallocated spending. When you see the schools are crumbling, when you see, you know, the lineups at the food banks, when you see how hard it is to get housing, why is it that they're sitting on over $22 billion when the needs in the community are so great? So absolutely, we have fought Bill 60, but we're not the only ones, as you rightly noted. The Ontario Health Coalition is fighting it. And we also have unions and other private sector groups that are actually taking it to court. So as far as we're concerned, this battle is not over, even if the legislation has passed. If and when the Ontario NDP becomes Government Ontario, this is gonna be one of the first pieces of legislation that we will publish. We cannot allow for the privatisation of healthcare. My wife right now is battling cervical cancer and breast cancer. My father right now has prostate cancer. And I know that I am gonna get quality care for my family members because of the public healthcare system. If we were in the States, we would be broke and run just to. So I know that illness can fall upon any single one of us. You should be able to receive high-quality, publicly funded healthcare that you all are paid for. We all paid for it. We draw on services when we need it, but we gotta protect it now.
What's a group privacy? They double-doubled it. They take money from working and they take money from you.
Exactly, exactly.
You cut them off from working and they will all die, you know?
Yeah.
Very simple. Don't make the money out of work. I'm appearing to you, basically, is the way I feel to the margin. I said, "Do you have any influence on the street?" Because without him, nothing is going to happen, without councillor. Can you push him in this direction?
I mean, I'm sorry that Chris is not here to respond for himself because I think he would probably have a much better answer than I would.
I didn't get any answer from you.
So let me, I'll tell you what I would, the way I would approach this is, right now, he has described that he's got two avenues that are opening up for his community input. He specifically described participatory budgeting and the allocation next year of $750,000 for this community. How you want to spend it, if this is the big project that the community is looking for, it may not be on the swimming pool because you have to negotiate with TCHC, but it could be another parcel of land. And I have seen in my time as a councillor for 12 years, we used to ice over the ice pad in Moore Park. We basically gave the residents the permission to put up a garden hose, literally put out a garden hose, and then they would sort of smooth it over with some shovels. And before you knew it, it was an ice pond. So there is some lower, sort of lower impact ways to do it. If it requires more higher impact, it requires more money. But $750,000, I'm not sure exactly how far that goes, loading a temporary ice pad. Because it's also seasonal, right? You have that cooperative weather. The other venue is Toronto Centre Projects, which is something that I started as a councillor, which he inherited. He still has the website. You can actually propose the idea to see if it can actually make it on the list. Now, the reason I say that, I know it's not, that's why I think Chris would have a more elegant answer than I do. But at least you're working with the tools that he's put forward. The other thing I would offer you is that I am one of the most enthusiastic people around ice pads and ice trails. I built one in College Park. If anyone's been to the College Park Ice Trail, it's, I love it. Yes, thank you, thank you. That project took a very large amount of time because it was actually sitting on top of a garage. So not unsimilar to, you know, laying it over a swimming pool. It is not solid ground. We had to put a roof membrane over the roof garage. Then we brought in some very high-end, very first time ever using the city of Toronto cooling equipment, and we converted that into an ice trail. I'm the biggest proponent for it because I've seen the magic happen in the wintertime and all the kids come out and skate. What I didn't know was that that ice trail was actually gonna be an amazing roller rink in the summertime because kids are there with their scooters, they're there with their roller skates, they're there with their skateboards, and the families love it. If I knew that it was going to be so transformative, it turned the space into a real place, I would have prioritised that space a lot sooner.
So after this meeting is over, if you wish, I will give you a short description.
Maybe not tonight, but I definitely wanna come back and see the structure because I love the idea.
You should get Mary Hassan's card. She is the...
I already exhausted with you. I exchanged emails for two months with these people and eventually they closed every file. That's why I'm appearing to you. Because these people are already not interested, period, you know?
So here's one more do-it-yourself job, just for fun, just for fun.
Let me do another thing. I'm an 84-year-old.
Okay, so I'll help you.
I mean, there are people half of my age. Why nobody wants to do anything? Explain it to me.
So here's another do-it-yourself job. Rose Park Avenue Public School has a beautiful field. It's beautiful because it's big.
Yes.
Now, let's say, for example, you tell the councillor, and I'm pretty sure it won't cost $750,000, but let's say to the councillor, "Build us something onto that school property that will allow us to convert it because in the wintertime, the kids don't use it the way they use in the summertime, and allow us to build a community access ice rink." Because the land is there. You don't have to build on top of a swimming pool. And he used to be the school board trustee, so he definitely has a relationship with the TDSP. And I think it could happen faster.
And then we could have a greenhouse and you could have a skating rink.
Yeah, then you free up that space for the greenhouse.
The most destructive force that comes against family is drugs, crime, violence. What is NDP policy? I know you have to work with the RCMP on that. But what is NDP policy on addressing that? We're looking at the youth and of course, when this forceful destructive power comes against its attacking all youth. What, the escalation of crime that goes with violence, that goes with drugs? How are you on this? I just...
Yeah, that's a really, that's a really great question. It's also one that I think is very deeply personal for many of us right now, especially since what we're seeing in our community. I have been, I have sat with too many mothers in Regent Park who have lost their children to, you know, that gateway through drugs and through gangs. And choices that were, you know, you may call them bad choices, but for some of the kids, they didn't feel like they had a choice, right? They kind of fell into it because it's what everybody was doing. I really think that we need to follow the four pillar approach when it comes to working through harm reduction as well as prevention, community safety, and also recovery. If you don't have those four pillars that anchor any drug strategy, it's not going to work. It can't be prevention only and it can't be recovery only. It must have the component around safety, safety of self, safety of family, safety of community, safety of neighbourhood, and then so forth, right? And it really has to also deal with harm reduction. We do not have, in Ontario, any viable credible drug strategy. I really feel like this government, and I'm not saying it because I'm a New Democrat, I'm saying it because as an Ontarian, as someone who really loves my community and I want my family members and my community members to be safe, we have failed people so miserably because if you have someone in your family who needs a pathway to recovery, you can't get a detox bed or a crisis bed anywhere. And we know, we know that the ER rooms are filled with people who are living with street-involved, you know, chronic morbidity issues right now. And they're being discharged right in the corner of Sherburne and Jarrett, I guess. And I know that, you know, those hospitals are also discharging people with no fixed address into, not even the shelters, the shelters are full, they're discharging them into parks. And I know that, you know, it's making the jobs of the police officers very difficult that they're being called to attend to someone with mental illness or an addiction when really they should be sending out healthcare professionals and bringing them into a recovery bed, right? And they may lapse, they may fall into recidivism, but if we don't have a system that catches people, it's going to get worse and worse. So the policy of the New Democrats is to build a viable drug strategy that is going to be well-rounded, comprehensive, and deeply seeped into those four pillars. Anything less than that just won't work. There's no reason why we have the Ontario's Mental Health Hospital, which is Cambridge, right? It's the Ontario Mental Health Hospital. It's just down the street from me, it's on the west side of the city. But how is it that I have more people right now living here in our neighbourhoods in the downtown east with mental illness and addiction that I can't get into that mental health and addiction hospital? Why is it that every single one of our community health centres right now are packed? And our healthcare professionals are so stressed out because there's no place to prefer people to viable services?
So what you're saying, there's no provincial funding for that?
It's woefully inadequate and there is no strategy that is comprehensive and permanent solution for big folk and not a priority for the current government. So everything is an announcement or press release, and I will say this because I care about this issue more. I mean, I care about many issues, but the reason why I left city council is because I couldn't get to the solutions around mental health and addictions because city council doesn't have mental health addiction councils. City councils and city councils across Ontario, their purview is not mental health and addictions. But we have downloaded everything, the provincial and federal government has downloaded everything into our neighbourhoods, and it's their responsibility to come to the table to work with us and fix it. I am not walking away from this, but it is shameful that families are falling apart in our neighbourhoods because they're not resourced to deal with it. And it's shameful, absolutely, I feel so strongly about this. It's so shameful that the provincial government, who's squarely within their purview, this is squarely a health issue and they are refusing to deal with it. I don't care how many times the Associate Minister Thibault comes up to 51 Division and does a ride through. I don't care because he's not bringing us the solutions.
So what do you think the neighbourhood can do in order to resolve this, in order to get them here and solve this problem?
We're gonna have to get our, so we have to get our hospitals to talk about it and not worry about the politicised blowback. We're gonna get our community health centres to talk about it and not worry about it because, and because right now you have frontline healthcare workers, nurses and doctors who are standing at the podium at press conferences, but the people that will sit with the cabinet ministers when announcements and funding is gonna be allocated are the CEOs of hospitals. We need those CEOs of hospitals to not be satisfied with the table scraps that they're getting. We need them to fight for the frontline workers who are bearing the front of the drug war. We need to be able to talk about it comprehensively as a community, as a nation, how can we get around this? And it's very hard because for a lot of community members, I know this is hard, for a lot of community members, they're feeling helpless. Like, what am I doing? My child is now here, or my husband is there, or my wife is here, you know, whatever it is. Family members can't do it by themselves. We need our professionals, our CEOs, and executive directors... We need our professionals, our CEOs and executive directors to really step up and to really push harder. And you will support them.
You know that people from Los Arros are coming here to buy drugs. St. James Town became a supermarket for the city of Toronto. You have to stop this first of all. And this fifty-one division, I don't know what they're doing, you know?
I mean, so with all this research, so with all research-
They're all wearing uniforms, but they don't see any results.
So fifty-one division, I've had the privilege and the honor of working with three different divisions in Toronto. Because council used to have a big ward, Ward twenty-seven used to go all the way to Moore Park. So between fifty-three division, fifty-two division, fifty-one division, I can tell you, you have the very best officers here in fifty-one division. They work hard. We are the only ward, Ward thirteen is the only ward where every single one of our neighborhoods are covered with dedicated community officers. And I know that it took a lot of time and energy to build that capacity, which means that it's not just crisis response. Is that our officers are here, like, these officers have been sitting here. These officers have been sitting here with us for almost two hours.
Every building in this neighborhood has a T1 drug dealer, and many have much more.
Yes, and it's worthwhile for us to, you know-
Yeah, let's hear some from some other words.
There is something that I worked on in Zaha. I used to work in the planning program. And they were talking about the begging and that and this. What I want is, you know, the children who are growing here. You know, they are exposed to everything, which is, we are not going to build a good society here. So what is the solution for that? Because there are retired older people here. There are children that are just, you know, growing and learning from us what is good, what is bad, you know? And what kind of society we are going to raise. So this makes me concerned. So what is the solution for this? Because there is, there are, there is so many things mixed together.
Let me, let me-
So, so, let me see, this is gathering here.
What are we going to be doing about harm reduction basically what you're asking?
Absolutely.
One other question that I have.
Yeah, so-
Well, you know, what I'm saying is-
Like, if we look at Allen Gardens Concentra, which is saying-
If we look at Allen Gardens and if we look at this community. I used to be a big help in the community that I used to live in, and I recently just moved here. Because I got court ordered to basically move here. And I'm not happy about it. I'm not happy that I'm being ripped away from my family. And that I have to live in this, no offense to you people, shitty-ass neighborhood. Where people are basically attacking one another, and there's been deaths where police can't really control it because they don't have any control over what's happening in this neighborhood. There's been a killing like, what, like around a year ago where someone died at Sherburne Station? And there are stabbings and there are shootings that are going on around Church Street too. And I understand that we have no control over this, but we need to be doing something about this within. Yeah, I understand that, but this is happening within our community, right? So we should be taking that seriously, and we should be doing something about it.
That's why we're having to choose.
Yeah. But I'm newer to this type of stuff, so it's like, I want some respect to that too. Because I don't know you people, and I'm newer to this community. And I wanna help this community, and I wanna know, like, what can I do? I'm a young person. What am I able to do?
Yeah, so what I'm saying, you know-
You're asking what can we do?
What can we do? Because you see, and they are exposing, you know, the good generation who's coming to be in society.
So this is, so this is what we can do, and I will honestly say, okay. I'm gonna have to stand up for this one, because it's actually, it's really important. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna try to, you're right, I need to pivot my head a little bit. I'm gonna respectfully disagree and say that this is one of the best neighborhoods in the country because of the people. And I have the privilege and honor of representing some of the most dynamic neighborhoods in Toronto. And I will say that I've represented Rosedale to Regent Park during my twelve years at City Council. But what makes this neighborhood special has always been the people. When this fire at six hundred and fifty Parliament, you know, disrupted and displaced community members for two years. This neighborhood leaned in and helped each other. When two hundred, well, they've gosh, which fire, really? Because every time I turn around, something is going wrong there. There's so many different challenges, but the community has always leaned in. Let me tell you what my observations are. And officers from fifty-one, you may or may not wanna lean into this one as well, because I think you have seen this. So our cousin, just down the street in Regent Park, sixty-nine acres, right? But they are, they have gone through this massive revitalization with a lot of community agencies embedded in the community, helping and investing the people. Between the Community Corner, Co-op, Freedom City, and just a handful, just including the fact that your residents association is one year old. One year old. There is some catch-up. There is definitely some catch-up that's required. But what I know is that this community is now getting more organized. You are definitely, I think what I'm seeing is understanding your power. I think you know that in order for you to get the resources, supports, and the agency's attention, including the three orders of government, you're gonna have to organize yourself just as loud as Regent. Because when you take a look at all that is happening in that neighborhood, and you've got, you have more people. You have way more people living here than you do in Regent. You are just on the cusp of doing that. But I think that you're gonna do it faster. It took Regent Park fifteen years before they broke ground. You don't have the luxury of being owned by one entity. Regent is, is, one entity owns Regent, right? TCHC through the City of Toronto. They didn't have to negotiate with ten different property owners. And they didn't have to negotiate with, you know, different phases of construction and building. This neighborhood came together with the different forces. And maybe that's in the past what held us back. But what I know now is that this neighborhood is more unified than I've seen it in five years. And that's largely- That's, yeah, but, and also you do have a neighborhood improvement designation that's coming out. So I am very confident that if these meetings continue to take place, but you're structured in what you want to achieve, right? By getting to your neighborhood improvement area designation, which should be coming, I think it's, it's coming. That's going to unlock a lot of resources. And I am very confident, I'm so confident, that you're going to see yourselves grow and speed along. Because it's coming together in a way that I haven't seen before. So yes, the buildings are older, a hundred percent. And you're dealing with a much more difficult political environment. You gotta deal with Medallion, then you have to deal with, like, this building owner and that building owner. Then you have to deal with, God bless you, the Blemmons, like, you know, the Blemmons at WS2. My least favorite, I will say it directly into the camera, my least favorite property owner in this area.
You have a favorite property owner?
They gave, I don't have any really, but they were, they're definitely my least favorite because they gave me the biggest headache around six fifty Parliament. And we had to fight like hell so that tenants could have just some very basic, what I think are essentials.
They even show up for seventy-two hours after that fire.
Exactly. So, you know what? That has all changed, and that the environment has changed because you guys were here.
There is no choice. So is there any plan to build a more health spaces for people? And putting more beds so there can be more patients who have access to those beds?
So definitely, I don't think that the provincial government has a strategy to build more recovery beds. They may be funding a few more beds. But the funding is tenuous, so they're not permanent, is my understanding. But even if you add a hundred beds to the inventory in Ontario, I could use a hundred beds just in this neighborhood. And so we need to be able to scale up. Everything I say to the government is more. Whatever you do, we need you to do it more. And we're all about winning more. We wanna, even if we're not there in two thousand and twenty-six, between now and two thousand and twenty-six, there are battles every weekend in Queen's Park, and our objective is to win you more.
So there is no any chance of creating, I'm thinking maybe it's very too out of the box, but another type edge, for example?
It would be unlikely, but I'll tell you, we need to decentralize from Camhage anyway. Because the more money you give to Camhage, God bless them and everybody who's working very hard there, but they're not gonna reach our community. We need to grow our community health centers, or we have a community-based healthcare that you know, you trust them, they know who you are by first name, you're not a file number. And they also can speak your language, they understand who you are, they understand your history of coming to Canada, because a lot of us are not born here. And they also understand how to do that trauma and more work. So it's-
Well, we have Sherburne Health Centers, you can use the line out of resources.
Yeah, and they're gonna need to, they're gonna need to grow. So that's why we-
And you grow, you need more hours.
We need all our community-based health centers to get a little bit louder. I mean, I don't wanna, they do some fantastic work, but sometimes I feel bad asking them to do more advocacy. But they're not getting the level of funding that they deserve. Because, because the money is going to the hospitals.
So when all is said and done, the shortage, the shortage of beds always there.
Not if we organize ourselves to fight for it. But this is why we need them, the community-based health centers to lead the fight with us. Thank you, everyone.
So I think, I work in the community, I'm part of the residents' council. And I think throughout this whole thing, one thing that's been bothering me is advocacy for youth that have health issues. Because I find that with my journey, I got sick in twenty-twenty, I have kidney disease, I have, well, my kidneys no longer work. So it's been quite the hassle. I've been in and out of hospital. And I find that a lot of the healthcare system don't really, I wouldn't say believe, but they don't take my concerns into consideration. And I find that is also an issue with a lot of other young people who are chronically ill. So I think, is there anything in place from your end that would help with advocacy for youth with disabilities and chronic illnesses? Because I find it very draining because I'm doing this by myself, and I've had to learn from my mom being ill with the same thing. And now I'm also going through it and having to learn what my blood read means or how to navigate the system when doctors like, oh, it's just a panic attack, when it's kind of like, no, it's not.
We did, we get age restricted as well, though.
Yeah, that as well.
We get age restricted to like twenty-four, twenty-five. And then when you get cut off, or even thirty, then it's like, what are you supposed to do?
Yes. So thank you for that question. I'm happy to pass you my card. Maybe we can have a longer conversation, just specifically to your personal health. But speaking globally, I would say, things that I have seen and learned is that unless you speak English, unless, you know, you are fair-skinned and you live in a certain area of postcode, the healthcare system, like all other systems, including education, will treat you differently. And I have, I have learned by observation through conversation and just by the studies that have been produced, is that there are times where we have different tier healthcare systems already. Not just private and public, but for different people. So let me work with you, and you can tell me how you want me to best support you. Because I think what you're looking for is something very specific. And we also work with our critics. So for example, I have a health critic who's actually gonna make an amazing health minister. If you ever have a chance to meet Franz Jelenak, she really knows the healthcare system as a registered nurse. But I also, thank you, but I also feel like she understands social health equity. And that's really what's gonna be needed for us to unpack, to make sure that you get access to healthcare in a way that you deserve without having to fight for it, which is exhausting. I agree, it's exhausting.
Yeah, how about the- Yeah, we have time for a few more questions. So can we get another queue? So who has questions?
The gentleman at the back kind of dropped.
Can we get your names, please, so we can make it nice?
It's just like, I've got a few questions about my kind of higher freedom. So as your, like, our representative-
Could you speak up, please?
Stand up? So as our representative, like, do you have the opportunity, like, write bills on our behalf or, like, put anything into legislation, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so in that regard, it's like, I live in one of the Medallion buildings. I've got a little two-year-old. And to be honest, like, the infrastructure in these buildings, it's completely neglected, you know? Like, we've got cockroaches, we've got baby cockroaches that are coming through the pipes and stuff. You know, and that's something that's in the whole neighborhood, right? So I don't know if you have this opportunity or not, but maybe if you could put together like a bill that says, like, hey, let's protect these buildings. Yes, they're old infrastructures, but let's protect them from getting torn down as long as the landlords take care of these buildings. You know, because like, yes, my rent is going up, but I don't wanna be paying more rent if they're not taking care of the internal infrastructure. You know what I'm trying to say? So, yeah.
Like, Chris, a lot of you have said though, like, you've got neighbors here who wanna be working to fight for stuff like that. And it's really useful if we ran together as tenants.
I understand the aspect of it, but I'm saying, like, from, like, her being our representative at the Ontario level, like, yes, there's different coalitions that are together, but I just think, like, you know what I'm trying to say? It's just like- Right? So like, that's one part of the issue, you know what I'm trying to say? But like, I think there's something that can be done from the provincial level in terms of accountability, you know? Right? So, like-
We can consult with another engineer. Nick, how would you undertake the six fifty Parliament? How would you do the fore? The building is sinking.
I think that should be a working with discussion, not necessarily still here. But I do appreciate the technical nature of that question. And I look forward to the technical answer. But to answer your question, which I think is an important one, so this is actually a really great discussion. So if you have an idea, you want your local MPP to table a bill on your behalf, like, why not just work on that together? And I'll start with one. So we actually have a bill on the books right now from my predecessors, who was Sues Morrison. It was called the St. James Town Act. And it largely came out of the fire at St. James Town. Now, there was a, there was a certain series of events that led her to create that bill, which I think is still a very excellent baseline, but maybe it's time for us to update it. So therefore, I bring that piece of legislation drafted, which I haven't retabled. Easy for me to retable because it's already there, but to be quite honest, I wanted to, I really want the thing through between two thousand and eighteen, when the fire took place, and when the bill was tabled. And now we're heading into two thousand and twenty-three. We have Bill twenty-three, we have bills, you know, all the bills that we have already seen that's come through this government. What should be the St. James Town response? So I'm happy to bring that to you, and we will workshop it, to see what needs to be there. And then we'll push it through legislative research, and that becomes truly your bill. And it's a bill that's named after your neighborhood and the things that you're looking for. So I'm happy to do that.
There's something I want to say. Across the city, there's houses, you know, that get this character in the potential.
Yeah.
You know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
And there's nothing to say that we can't do the same for St. James Town. Like, it's been a hub, culturally, like, it's been a hub for so long. And it does so much for so many people, like, newcomers and everything. And so I think you have an opportunity here on our behalf to actually, like, push forward a bill to protect the whole neighborhood. Just like they did the Regent Park, right? So-
It doesn't have any special designation except for the category.
It's under a law master agreement. But there is a tool that the City of Toronto is investigating right now, and it's around cultural districts. So does St. James, does St. James Town qualify as a cultural district? It's really hard to say no.
It's the most diverse community in the world. That's a pretty good start.
And it's not necessarily because of the buildings, so the brick and mortar. But I've always said, it's because of the people and what happens in between the spaces of the buildings. That little street, that nameless street that we all walk up and down.
St. James Street.
But, but you know the street, the street, that's the street between my favorite fruit store and the grocery store where everybody is hustling.
Oh, that's what they're doing.
Well, so, so, listen, 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 without, without-
That's technically Ontario's.
Without casting judgment on anyone, what is remarkable about that is the energy. I'm not looking at the product that people are selling or the food that they're making and selling. I'm looking at the way the neighbors are connecting with each other on that little patch. That's special. You don't even have that much vibrancy in the village of Yorkville, and I- and I tell you, we paved that neighborhood with granite.
Yeah, but they're sealed by that.
But, no, no, you can, so so there are other elements that we don't necessarily want there publicly, but but what, but what I'm saying is that there is something very special about what happens when you have people coming together in public spaces and it happens rather organically. Okay, why don't I take, I'll take one final question from the back of the room who hasn't spoken as of yet, okay? And then everybody who did get their question in, I'm gonna leave you my card, I'm gonna set up a time you can, we we talk to each other or you email me your question, I'll respond to it right. Or you can share the question with the council, we all club them together and send them in the bunch. Look at Dipika, Dipika is so organized. Okay.
Most people who apply for ODSP and we need it are denied until you get a lawyer involved. Are there reforms coming from the the province for this process that's costing the government so much more money because the the process is broken?
I agree with you that the process is broken, I do, I also agree with you that we need to reform the appeals process because it's very dehumanizing for people to have to prove that they have a disability over and over again, it just re-traumatizes everyone, but as far as I know, there's no, there's no planned changes from the government. Uh, with respect to ODSP? Uh, you can contact myself as your local MPP and I will redirect you to our critic member, uh, her name is Sarah Jama, who is from, uh, Hamilton, new MPP, a little Energizer buddy, also someone who lived, experienced, uh, living with a disability. I think she may be the only MPP that was a recipient.
One, two, three, St. Jamestown!
Awesome. Yeah.
My name is Dipika and I am the co-chair of the St. Jamestown Residents' Council and we just completed our summer town hall with our MPP, Kristin Wong-Tam. And we had been planning for this event for the past several weeks, coordinating with with her office and this event, as we all saw, was a huge success, a lot of people from our community attended, they asked very meaningful, very relevant questions, uh, that concern our neighbors, issues related to safety, to housing, to affordability, to, um, you know, uh, gun violence, to to overall violence, I think, and these issues are very, very close to our heart as the residents' council and as residents who live here, raise our families here, our kids go to school in this neighborhood, we go to the playground every evening with our families. Um, and and as long as this neighborhood remains safe, inclusive, um, respectful and diverse, I think that's the beauty of this neighborhood that we like to call our home. And, uh, I think Kristin was very, very, uh, respectful of all the questions, Kristin was very open, very engaged with the residents and I think deep down in her heart, she truly is a St. Jamestown resident and she considers this one of her homes because she obviously has so many other, uh, issues and concerns that people from all other constituencies bring to her, but I think we we feel very happy and proud and, um, I would say privileged that that we have politicians come and engage with us for two, two and a half hours at length and and are open about sharing things that they are doing as well as things that they're unable to do because of so many things that I would say are are obstacles to them and you know, they're very open about it and you don't see that very often in politics. So so I I just say that, you know, I I'm enjoying the work that I do and I'm extremely proud of the work that I do for the residents' council. So I hope that we can continue doing these events, we have several, uh, of these town halls planned, uh, in the fall, we hope, and we, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, to probably bring Marcin as well to our, uh, town hall and we'll see how that goes. But with Chris Moyes and with Kristin Wong-Tam, I can only say that, um, these people are genuinely concerned about this neighborhood and our community, thank you.